Welcome, everybody. Happy New Year. Can everybody rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to our... Welcome to our January 10th, 2018 meeting. We have emergency exits. If there is an emergency, the exits turn the back of the room on the side and then follow the signs in the hallway to the outside of the building. Any and all correspondence that can be posted are posted on the table in the hallway outside. There are two letters out there. And we are proud to welcome students from Culver who will present a version of Shakespeare for us. So if you'd like to come up, if you want to go on the stage, Darren. Very good. It's all yours, then.
Go. You're up.
One of the greatest programs we have in the elementary school is our stellar program, Success in Technology, Enrichment, Library, Literacy, and Research. Nineteen years ago, we moved from the library model to a stellar enrichment model. And one of the greatest pieces of stellar is the enrichment part. It really fulfills a great need for enriching kids, not only developing their talents and their skills, but for providing enrichment for all students. Our wonderful stellar teacher, Chris Figueroa, is here to choose our students to present tonight.
I just wrote down three things I wanted to say. So I went to the first night to Mrs. Sempino, Mrs. Colletieri, for spearheading this program and believing us and giving us our support for stellar program. Myself and many of the stellar teachers have been visited by other districts to see this program. They believe in it. They're starting with a stellar program in their district as well. Stellar provides enrichment for all and not just for a few. I want to thank all the teachers, especially in elementary school, because we sometimes get overlooked. We create the foundation that enables your students to become IB graduates or stars of hope for us. And thank you to all the stellar teachers. They do amazing jobs. Some are in charge of the great educational efforts they have in their school. They're in charge of NWA. We all have our different strengths. And no matter how you look at it, everything we do in stellar is enrichment. So at Culver, in stellar, in fifth, five-year-olds in stellar, they are coding. Seven-year-olds are learning how to type. I did that in high school. Fourth-gradeers understand the dangers and advantages of the technology that we have today. All our students are programming robots. Fourth-grade graders at Culver are introduced to the challenging text. Fourth-grade is read a midst of an extreme, which you'll see here today. Fifth-grade is study Romeo and Juliet and Hannah. What better text than Romeo and Shakespeare? We research the history, the setting of a play. We talk about the rules, the themes, the plots, the character traits. We introduce great script reading strategies as referring, concluding, predicting. At Culver, we also perform the play, which makes it a better connection. Let's meet our performers today. First, we have Daniel Date. He is Peter Quince. He is the director of the play The Demon of the Flare. Melania, Melania, Melania. She plays the fairy. She is best friends with Titania, the queen of the fairies. And... She plays Titania, the queen of the fairies. There was a problem going on in the enchanted forest. We learned a little bit about it soon. So Peter. Next, we have our announcers, Sophia and Zoe. They move the plot along. They help the audience to understand what's going on. Next, we have Puck. Puck is King Oberon's henchman. He does all of his dirty work. That's Todd. And finally, we have King Oberon playing by Frank Glaven. Let's hear it, Todd. I forgot. And last but not least, we have Leah playing Nick Bottom, one of the actors in the play The Demon's Play. And something happens to Nick Bottom during the play. You'll see what that is.
On this day, Queen William Shakespeare's most popular comedy is written around 1594 and 1595. It portrays the events of four young Indian who are in love, a group of amateur actors, and their interaction with different fairies and a deepened love. The game places the different love between enchanted forests. There is an innocent elf named Oberon, Titania, the queen of the fairies, and a neighbor who has had their princess born. There is a fairy. Who's right now? This play is likely performed throughout the world. No wonder it's about the doors of popular acts falling in love. A pub note falling in love to make fools of a dog. So the amateur actor, who remembers when he would have tried that, in runaway love, is saying what happened to that. I notice that he wants it as magical as part of fairies. And the night that they meet, it's made for him. And on this day, the elves who brought us the ghostly fairies walk. Here are a couple of them right now.
How now, spirit? Was it one of you?
Over hills, over fields, there are bushes that are black. Over cars, over hills, there are flecks that are black. Our queen, that Oliver elves come here and on.
But they don't, because Bob is here tonight.
This is not good news for the devious queen of the fairies who has her habit in park. Queen Titania has adopted a local descent of a deer. And King Oberon has to travel himself for his people.
Oberon is red, because he has a love for the boy stolen from the Indian king. And jealous Oberon is the child that the prince has fought for a while.
Even I'm sticking your cheek. Or you are that sprite called Bob the devil. We, Puck, are not you, he.
I bet that fairy wandered the night. But, poor fairy, here comes Oberon.
And here's my mistress. Ha!
You met by the way, Titania.
Why, jealous Oberon?
Why should Titania cross over on? I do prefer the changeling boy.
The fairyland hides, not the child in me. I will not harbor you.
Give me that boy.
Not for thy fairy kingdom. Fairies away. Oberon says, "I know, please, not."
Well, go thy way. Thou shalt not from this throne till I torment thee for this injury. My gentle Puck, come hither. Thou rememberst once over the women on the garden bench.
I remember.
That very time I saw a man who was fallen to the river. To all of them.
Oberon explains that he could try shooting out of lady's feet. He misses target and gives a flash which turns her off. This flash makes people fall in love.
The juice of it, on sleeping islands, make men or women madly go. On the next night, he appears to be... Fetch me this o...
Look, girl, I was searching for you in forty minutes.
Oberon has to be comparing to the tall ones in the shore. Having watched this juice, I watch Titania when she is asleep and drops her into the flicker of it in her eyes. The next mudling she sees is a lion, bear, wolf, man. Bull, manly monkey, you are busy egg. She shall pursue with the soul of her love. Then Oberon can steal Titania's pig, going before he drinks the magic flower. And if I take this charm for all her sake, as I can take it with another bird, I'll make her render up her pitchman. But who comes here? I am invisible.
But Puck has looked. But Puck is placed down on bottom. From behind, it looks like some parking lot. He takes five entrance, going into the heavy box.
If I were fair, could he? I would hold me down. Oh monsters, oh strange, we are haunted. Flymasters, help! Why do they run from this place? This is to make a handsome fish, to fight fish. But I will not stir this lake. I will up and down here, and I will sit. He also caught so glad to view with orange thorny milk. The crosswoods is not so true, the red roots, the little twome. He won't. Titania waits, and he might sorry for such work. My angel, wake me from my fiery bed. I pray thee, gentle mortal, say again. I love thee.
Me, thanks, mistress. We should have little reasons for that. And yet to say the truth, reason and love keep little company from each other nowadays.
Thou art as wise, and thou art beautiful.
Not so neither. I may have bitten enough to get out of this room.
How did this boy do not desire to go? I do love you, therefore come with me. I will give the fairies to Titania. He's awesome, come hither. Ready? Be kind to the gentleman. Be of the awkward sounds to you, fairies, with purple greens, green fakes, and yolkers. Hey, I'm loyal. Come wait upon him, lead him to my bow. He won't. Tie up my love's tongue, bring him side with me.
I wonder if Titania will. Here comes my destiny. How now, love spirit?
My mistress, the monsters in love.
If these shadows have offended, think let this ban all its vengeance. That you have the slumber near, while these visions stay up here. And this weekend I will see no more yielding but a drink. Gentles, do not repent. If you pardon, we will live. And as I have a honest puff, make we have an honest look. Now to take this serpent's lump, we will make him vengeful. Thus the puff will lie your fault, so unite until you walk. Give me your hand, and we be friends, and often shall restore our hands.
Don't go yet, please. Shakespeare would be very proud. I wasn't sure if those were not the new uniforms at Culver at school. But if you could, John, could we just come up and have a picture with the players?
Cute.
Thank you, thank you, everybody from Culver. That was unbelievable. Okay, now we're up to...
Thank you very much. Yes, if we could, now we're going to transition a little to our athletic program. It gives us an opportunity, usually each sports season, to honor those participants who have excelled. We have our athletic director, Carol Rosetto, to join us and who do the introductions. What I would like for us to do, please, if we could, since we have the stage available, to have, as we go through each of the sports, if you don't mind, joining us up on the stage. And the president and I would like to congratulate each of them.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. It is my pleasure to introduce this next group of student athletes and to honor them for their outstanding achievements during the fall 2017 athletic season. Through a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication, both on and off-season, all of these individuals earned all-county honors or above. Before I begin speaking about the individual accomplishments, I would like to mention that the boys' cross-country team and the girls' cheerleading, cross-country, soccer, swimming, diving, tennis, and volleyball teams were all recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as scholar-athlete teams for the fall of 2017. To start us off with individual accom... To start us off with individual accomplishments, I would like to invite Joe Buglione and Danny Kelleher from the boys' varsity soccer team to the stage. Guys, when I say your name, just wave so they know who I'm talking about. Joe has been a three-year starter and was captain of the varsity boys' soccer team this year. His tremendous skills and unmatched work ethic led him to be a starter and an all-conference selection as both a freshman and a sophomore. This season, as a junior, Joe led the team in goals and assists and earned all-county honors. In his... Danny, obviously you can figure that out. In his first varsity season, Danny became the starting goalkeeper. He was an integral part of the boys' varsity soccer team. He consistently displayed a tremendous ability as a shot-stopper, and his distribution was a vital part of the team's counterattack. As a result of his effort and success this season, Danny was selected as an honorable mention all-county player. So this is a photo op for the boys' varsity soccer team. Congratulations, Joe and Danny. Thank you, boys. I would now like to invite Coach Jen Harmon and Alexandra Kruma and Erin McElwain to the stage from the girls' varsity soccer team. Okay, ladies, wave. Alex. There we go. Alex has been a three-year varsity player who started all games this season for the Cyclones. Alex's knowledge of the game, tenacity in the center of the midfield, and determination to go to goal led her to be voted by her teammates as the best midfielder of the 2017 team and earned her all-county honors. Erin, also a three-year varsity player, and also started all games this season. Her defensive skills, as well as her ability to get forward, earned her a new position this year, and she ended the season as one of the best defenders in the county, earning her the team's Unsung Hero Award and an all-county selection. Congratulations, Erin and Alex, and the girls' varsity soccer team. Thank you, ladies. Next, I would like to call Tim O'Brien from the boys' golf team. Tim has been a starter for the Cyclone golf team for the past three years. As a freshman and a sophomore, his performance earned him all-conference honors. This year, he played the number-one spot throughout the season and was an integral part of why Southside qualified as a team for the county championships this May for the 11th year in a row. Individually, Timmy finished the fall portion of the season ranked 12th in the county and received honorable mention all-county honors for his efforts thus far. Congratulations to Tim and good luck to the Cyclones golf team and Timmy and the counties in the spring. I would now like to invite Coach Chris Colasante and girls' tennis player Julia Gentio and Lauren Zola. Before I speak about our athletes, I would like to mention that Chris Colasante was selected by the Nassau County Girls' Tennis Coaches Association as the conference coach of the year. Congratulations, Chris. Wait when you hear your name. Individually, Julia was selected as team MVP and earned all-division, all-conference, and all-county honors this season with a perfect 13-0 record. Individually, Lauren was selected as the rookie of the year and played first singles as a freshman, also earning all-conference and all-county honors. Together, as a doubles pair, they entered and won the first three rounds in the Nassau County Tennis Championships, advancing to the quarterfinals and earning all-county honors as doubles. To me, this shows great sportsmanship and maturity that these two in-season rivals for the number-one single spot could put that aside and play together and successfully compete in the county championship as a combo. So congratulations, Julia and Lauren, and the varsity tennis team. It is now my pleasure to speak on behalf of the girls' volleyball team. Before I call up our athletes, I would like to mention that Coach Scallas, who couldn't be here tonight because she is actually judging a gymnastics meet at the moment, was selected by the New York State Volleyball Coaches Association as the coach of the year. It is now my pleasure to call up assistant coach Courtney Grubb and your... Go ahead, Court. And your Nassau County Class A girls' volleyball champions. And I'm going to call you up in alphabetical order. Maggie Basil. Colleen Farrell. Alexa Pinkleton. Jaden Gurrell. Morgan Gilligan. Ryan Hoffman. Stephanie Jackson, who could not be here tonight, but she also earned all Class A as an individual. Caroline Lamachia, who also could not be here tonight, earned all-state, all-Lone Island Second Team, and all-county as an individual. Faith Lamachia, who could also not be here tonight. Juliette Lamachia, representing. Caroline Lanzalata. Caroline was named the New York State Volleyball Coaches Association Player of the Year and earned all-state, all-Lone Island First Team and all-county honors as an individual. Dorothy Leek. Allison Rosenbaum. Kaitlin Toffelson. Jackie Wilkinson. Jackie was selected as the Nassau County Class A MVP and earned all Class A honors as an individual. And last, but certainly not least, Annalee Sola, who earned the Nassau County Coaches Association Scholar-Athlete Award. Coach Scallas stated that the 2017 volleyball season was one of great difficulty for the varsity squad. With the pressures of a first-place preseason ranking, losing key games to rivals Manhasset and Wantor, and losing a captain and the kill leader a week before the playoffs to a fractured foot, could have resulted in a downward spiral. But these 16 determined young ladies and their coaches rallied together and mapped out a plan and worked towards and achieved the common goal of becoming the 2017 Nassau County Class A volleyball champions. Even more impressive was that they were named Nassau County Coaches Association to receive the 2017 Nassau County Sportsmanship Award. And in their spare time, they managed to raise over $4,500 for Breast Cancer Side Out Foundation, as well as the RVC Breast Cancer Coalition this season. So congratulations on a great job this season. See, now I wouldn't have to duck underneath that. Oh, boy. That's really dark. While they're taking the picture, both boys are not here, but I would like to share that two football players were also honored this season. Deandre Satchel was a three-year varsity starter. His physical attributes made him one of the top defensive ends in Nassau County. This season alone, he totaled 25 tackles. Nine of those tackles for a loss, two sacks, one forced fumble, one fumble recovery, and two blocked punts. This year, Deandre was selected to the all-county team and played in the exceptional senior game on Thanksgiving morning. Tyga Scott, who is actually at a varsity wrestling meet right now, was also a three-year offensive and defensive varsity starter. He ended the season as one of the most decorated football players to ever come through the program at Southside. He was one of only four Southside players to earn all-conference, all-county, and all-Lone Island honors. He played in the exceptional senior game on Thanksgiving. And in June, he will be only the second Cyclone to ever compete in the Empire Challenge game between Long Island and New York City. So congratulations, boys. Next, I would like to invite Coach Chris Webster and assistant coach Kerry Figueroa and Chris Collins, Dan Finning, and Mike Louven to the stage. This crew represents boys' cross-country. Before I speak about these three young men, I would like to mention that Coach Webster was selected by the Nassau County Track Coaches Association as the coach of the year. Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations, Coach. Chris Collins, wave. Chris was a captain who has been ranked as a top-five county runner since he was a freshman, where his quiet and poised demeanor made him a respected peer off the field and a fierce competitor during the race. Chris has been a vital component in the continued success of the boys team, capping his senior year earning the privilege titles of all-conference and all-county. Congratulations, Chris. Dan. Hi, Dan. Dan has been on the team since he was a freshman and entered his junior year with tremendous success. The boys finished their regular season with 10 wins and three losses and finished third in the conference championship, due in no small part to Dan's drive and motivation. Dan finished another successful season with the honored titles of all-conference and all-county. Mike. Captain Mike Louven, he has been a top-three-ranked county runner since his freshman year and also held the number-one spot for the Cyclones for the last three. A diligent captain and disciplined runner, Mike completed his senior season earning all-conference and all-county honors, and by qualifying and running in the state championship meet that was held in Rochester this past November. He was also selected as a News 12 Scholar-Athlete this season. Congratulations, Coach Webster, Figs, and the Boys Cross Country team. Coaches, stay up there, please. Next, it is my privilege to introduce the state qualifying and Nassau County Championship Girls Cross Country Team in alphabetical order. Sarah Allen, who could not be here tonight. Avery Bruehl. Avery earned all-conference and all-county honors as an individual this season. Olivia Duca. Olivia also earned all-conference and all-county honors as an individual. Amanda Morn. Amanda earned all-conference and all-county honors as an individual. Kaitlin Moore. Kaitlin earned all-conference and all-county honors as an individual. Maggie Wright. And Carly Woelfill. Carly was this year's county champion and placed ninth in the state as an individual, which earned her all-state, all-county, and all-conference honors this season. Coach Webster stated... Sorry, Kate Hammer. And Camille Charvey. Sorry, ladies. You were left off the list, but definitely not forgotten, ladies, sorry. Coach Webster stated that this young girls cross-country team had to regroup after graduating two of last year's starting lineup. But after losing their first meet of the season to Manhasset, they never looked back. Their record of 12 wins and one loss was impressive, but even more exciting was the county championship, where they defeated Manhasset and were crowned county champions against all odds. What made the... What made the day even more outstanding was to witness Southside's top runner, Carly Woelfill. Last year, as a freshman, Carly took second place in the county championship, but this year, Carly literally ran away with the race, winning the county title with the second-place runner far, far behind her. Southside's second-fastest runner, Katie Moore, finished third in the county championships. And then the girls came back the next week to run in the state championship qualifier, facing a team that had a 10-year winning streak and record of 140 wins and zero losses. Again, the girls showed what they were about, defeating the team and earning the privilege of representing Nassau County in the state championships that were being held the following week in Rochester. The final exciting moment of the season was watching Carly place ninth in the state championship, earning her the title of all-state. Congratulations, coaches, and this year's girls varsity cross-country team. And that sums up fall athletics. Stay tuned to the winter. Just a reminder that the Booster Club will be having its annual Booster Bash on Saturday, January 27. The proceeds from this event actually go towards the senior scholarships that are offered in May, actually, June, at the Varsity S Dinner. So please support your Booster Club, and it's a really fun night. Have a great evening.
Everybody feels so spaced out now. Nobody wants to come up? Dr. Johnson?
Each year, we provide the board an opportunity to hear about our wonderful summer program. We do an annual review. I think what I'd like to do is to ask Dr. Leahy just take a moment and then introduce Jim Duffy, if you wouldn't mind, to take just a very brief overview, and then we'll do the report, and then we can open it up for discussion.
Absolutely. For the third summer, Jim Duffy's been our summer program principal. He continues to do a fabulous job. Our enrollment enrichment programs is well over 500. It's a wonderful, dynamic program. We look forward to hearing about what happened in 2017.
Thank you, Dr. Leahy, and I'd like to start by calling up one of our wonderful teachers, Fran Muselli, who teaches quilting and painting with watercolors. And we brought a few students with us today who are going to show off some of their projects. So Katie and Catherine and anyone else who brought a project can come on up and show off the great work that you did this summer.
Good evening. My name is Francis Musillo. I've been teaching watercolor painting and calligraphy and quilting. I worked the adult ed program and taught cooking, and I also have done many other subjects. One of the projects this past summer we did, I did it years ago, and we tried to almost just go back to it to see what happens. And two of our young ladies that we have here, Katie and Catherine, Catherine did a whole quilt, which we really, really were amazed at. Hold up. The two pieces of fabric that she took was hand-sewn and flipped together back-to-back, and then we stuffed it with batting, and she sewed the whole thing up. Also, what that was taught was buttons, how to sew buttons, and how to embellish any quilt that they did make. The wonderful other thing that Katie did, Katie did a double-transfer technique, which I save calendars. And when I bring the calendars into the classes, what the kids do is I teach them how to trace a photograph, and what they do is a double-transfer. They trace the picture that they actually traced from the photograph, put it on a piece of watercolor painting, and when the pieces are hung up... She's a little shy, so I'm showing you the gorgeous work that she did. The work that they do is absolutely amazing. And when we have worked on the quilting, I've also shown the kids how to do pillows. They've sewn pillows, because a lot of this stuff is a lost art. A lot of the children didn't even know how to thread a needle. They didn't even know how to sew a button-on. So this was something that I absolutely loved to do. I also showed them how to make throw pillows. They also did a lot of other work besides... Besides doing the double-transfer technique, when you save the calendars, you actually could see how beautiful some of the work can turn out, and they are so creative. If they begin to scratch the surface, that's all I really want. We've learned abstract painting with painter's tape. We've worked with coffee filters. I bring in coffee filters. And actually, coffee filters, when you work with a coffee filter, you could make a flower or a butterfly, and they use their imagination. Some of them made stained glass windows from the pictures. So I really enjoyed it, and I hope that they really enjoyed it. We had a great summer, and I hope to continue to work to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, ladies. Beautiful job, girls.
Can we get a picture with them? Wait, don't go away. John? Would you mind?
So we've already started planning for summer 2018, which has been fun to do when it was six degrees out, because it kept us warm thinking about it. But Jim runs not only this K-8 enrichment program, but a Regents Review Program, a remediation program for middle school, and a pre-K program.
That's right. And thank you very much, girls. Thank you for coming in and for all your lovely work. Thank you. So as Dr. Leahy said already, the planning for 2018 has begun. Last year, we ran the pre-K program at Covert, the K-8 enrichment program at Hewitt. We ran the middle school program and the high school program at the Southside High School, and we also started a new bridge program for incoming fifth, sixth, and seventh graders, and that was run at Hewitt as well, and we'll be running all those programs in the same locations next year. Our enrichment programs this year at Hewitt offered over 40 different one-hour classes for students to sign up for, including sports, robotics, STEM, art, music, cooking, and just fun academic-based classes. And I have some pictures up here to show. We ran band, orchestra, all sorts of art classes. A photography class this year, so that's a student who did drawings on the blacktop and then put herself into those drawings as if she was collecting stars. We ran several cooking classes. We ran yoga classes, tennis classes, basketball classes. The top left was our most popular class this year. That's a Battle Bot class, where students made their own robots, programmed the robots, and then they brought in a big floor from the middle school, and they had robotic fights like Battle Bots. So that was a very popular class. Also, we have STEM in the bottom-left-hand corner. Students did STEM Robotics Junior this year with Dash and Dot Robots that were donated from the Ed Foundation, and all sorts of outdoor activities, soccer, basketball, football. And our program has really gotten bigger and bigger every year. We're up to almost 550 students just at the Hewitt program alone. Our pre-K program has steadily been about 160 students, which is wonderful also. Running the program, as I said earlier, I've started already getting ready to run classes for next year. Our staff for 2017 was essentially the same as the year before. We had the same amount of teachers, school nurses at Covert and Hewitt, secretary, one and a third psychologist, teacher assistants, teacher aides, and high school workers, many of whom I saw on stage today, and they're a vital part of the program. They work in the classes, they walk students from class to class. We do a drop-off program at Hewitt, which I think parents love, where they pull into the cutouts where the buses are, and the high school students open the door, greet the parents, and walk the students to the area where they line up. And they participate with the kids and help them do some of these wonderful programs, because as wonderful as our teachers are, the high school helpers really help out the students doing some of the work. And we also have a volunteer program for eighth graders who are kind of in training to be workers the following year as high school workers. What am I aiming at here? The price for the K-8 enrichment program is $390 in district and $465 out of district, and we had quite a few out-of-district families come in this year, the last two years, actually. And there's an early registration fee of $350 if you register early, and that gets you three one-hour classes, one at 9:00, one at 10:00, one at 11:00. And we run from 9:00 to 12:00, 19 days over the summer. And $400 for the pre-K program, that's 8:30 to 11:30, and that gives parents an opportunity to drop off at one program, then drop off at another, and then pick up and pick up. Besides the normal class, some of the classes that have really been the cornerstone of the summer program, we introduced a few new classes: Battle Bots, Booked, which is a reading class, Cross Country Adventure, Everyone Can Draw, Hands-on Art, iPad Innovations, Musical Adventure, Pitch Perfect, which returned this year, Robotics Junior, Summer Photo Fun, and Trendy Tasty Treats, which was another big hit. For our third year in a row, we've partnered up with Nassau Bosse's and been part of the Bosse's summer program. Thirty-two districts in all are part of the Nassau summer program, and our relationship with them has really given us some wonderful benefits. Being part of the Bosse's program means that we get state aid for all the money that we spend through Bosse's. I believe we get about half of the money back that we put into the program, and that includes salaries and things like that, so that gives us a real lot of money back from the state. Bosse's also takes over the payroll for us and pays all the staff. They help us grade the Regents exams, they provide testing data, and they also provide us with some curriculum that we could use for our Regents Review classes. And that's been more and more important now. It's very difficult to take an entire year worth of class and condense it into 25 days and have a good pacing for that and know what to teach and when. So Bosse's had hired teachers from all over the district to write some curriculum and figure out what to spend each amount of your time on, which topics. And we had done some training this year to get some of our staff to use the new Bosse's curriculum and pull their resources, and even if we don't follow it exact, at least we have some new resources to pull from. On the board is monies that were spent mostly through Bosse's, but money in general spent on the program, and it stayed relatively constant from the year before. Our total expenditures are up there at $435,000, and then receipts from the program and approximate state aid brings our total revenues up to $450,000, which means that this program made about $15,000 or $16,000 this year. And that's something that Dr. Leahy and I have... And that's something that Dr. Leahy and I are very proud of, that we've been able to take this program into a money-making program, not only providing the community with some great programs. I think our K-8 enrichment program is wonderful, the pre-K program, an opportunity for middle school kids and high school kids to take those repeater classes, and we don't charge for those. And then almost 70 high school workers having summer jobs within that program and still turn a profit for the district is something that Dr. Leahy and I are very proud of. Yeah, open up for questions.
Regents Review, how, are there any modifications that you feel you would like to make or feel necessary to make?
Well, the Regents Review Program, we're very happy to have it back at the location of the high school. We think that that's a good location. It had been at Wilson the year before, it had been at the middle school. So Mr. Webster, who was here earlier today, he ran the program last year. We liked the location here. We think that we have a very good staff, and they're almost all Rockville Center staff. We also give that Regents Review Program, those teachers, a chance to choose either to teach the entirety of the program or to choose to teach half the program and pair it up with a colleague. And I don't think that we have any new changes beyond that for next year. And that and using the, more of the Bosse's curriculum and using a little bit more of some of the things that Bosse's can offer us.
Looking at some of the data.
Yes.
Particularly geometry. We, it looks like we had four out of 27.
Give me one second to grab.
Sure. Not counting walk-ons, walk-ins.
Okay, so you're looking at the...
The last page. Geometry, Common Core geometry.
Yes. Yes, so we had a relatively low passing score for students who took the geometry, who had taken our classes. In total, we had 35 percent. Believe it or not, that's higher than the passing rate of the Nassau County Bosse's number that I have.
Okay, but those kids all didn't take the program.
Right.
Only the 27 did.
Right. Yes, the number 15 is a low percentage. It is alarming, but it is not too out of line, and I do have the Bosse's catalog here that shows what other districts had, how other districts had performed. It is not out of line with some of the scores that we see at these other districts.
Okay, that, that may be, but is there anything that we can do outside of comparison with others that we can help our kids succeed?
Sure.
To a greater extent?
Right.
If I could, Mr. Mason, I just had a conversation with Judy Hines, who runs the Bosse's program, she, summer program, and she has a opportunity to train teachers in the curriculum that Regents, the Regents curriculum that Bosse's has helped develop. And I did express an interest in trying to get more of that training this year. We had a little bit last year. I think that would benefit.
Oh, sure.
Jim referred to the pacing of the instruction over the summer. It's very different than teaching a full-year program. We're doing it over 25 days. Sometimes the responsibility is split. So I think we can work a little bit on, maybe a little staff development, professional development on the curriculum itself.
Anything created that we can do to help our kids have a greater success rate would only benefit them.
But was, there was something special about this geometry.
Yeah, Doc, could I just comment on that? I'm sitting here fuming over here a little bit. Look, if you take a look at that number, 27, it's way out of line with the rest of the numbers that we generally expect. Our pass rate this year was lower than anticipated. We ended up with a number, larger, much larger number of kids in geometry than we anticipated. And it was in part because of the fault of the exam itself.
So the summer carried forth from the...
Correct. That both exams were problematic. We lived with this experience with my colleagues and other school districts. We have registered numerous complaints with the state. They promised they will change it next year, but what happened was both those exams were in the pipeline and already done, so they were kind of mirror images of one another. And we're hoping that next year, our pass rate will be more in line with what we anticipated has been in the past.
Okay.
Pardon me?
They've changed the exam in January.
For January.
Mr. Murphy, can you come over to the mic?
They shortened the exam, they took off, I think, John, it's a six-point question?
Correct.
That they just lopped off, essentially?
Statewide was the worst scoring question in the whole country.
We are recording, and people at home are probably saying, "What's going on?"
Where's that man coming from? Right, where's that voice?
For the January exam this year, they're take, they took off one of the extended responses, which is a six-point question, but maintained a three-hour duration. Statewide, that was the weakest scoring question. The state's argument being that, in the hopes that taking the weakest question off it will re-norm the scores, and as a result, the passing rate. So we'll see.
We'll see.
I also think, if I remember correctly, in August, a lot of people retook the exam thinking that they might make those changes, hoping that their grade would improve, and that's why we have so many people taking the exam who didn't take our class.
Correct.
Right. And there was very little fluctuation in the grade relative to what they took in June.
But that's why the, the passing rate of the walk-ins is much higher than of those who took the class, because a lot of them were just looking to...
They were looking to raise their grade. Didn't happen.
We also responded as a district to both the geometry and the Algebra II on student transcripts.
But I do feel that the, the curriculum that Bosse's is developing specifically for the summer program could be an answer for a lot of, not just that test and not just that test score, but to train the staff and to give them access to the curriculum will be an answer to help them along the way.
First of all, I would like to also congratulate you. I know something that we were always talking about, whether we're in the red or in the black, and, you know, you, we've always felt it was an incredibly important program, all aspects of our summer program, so knowing that it's, that it's in the black and not in the red is very helpful to keep it going.
Thank you.
And I want to congratulate you also, the idea of having so many of our students, whether it be the really little ones getting ready to go into kindergarten, or, or our middle schoolers going through, or our high schoolers coming back, it's just fabulous.
Thank you.
You plan on holding this again at Hewitt?
Yes, so the plan is next year, Covert will continue to hold the pre-K program. We think that Hewitt is a very nice home for the K-8 enrichment program. There's a lot of things to like about it, not just those cutouts in the front that I talked about, the drop-off and pickup. There's also fenced-in areas that make it very convenient for parents to pick their kids up in the afternoon, and the building itself lends itself to a K-8. If you're a kindergartner, you're walking into a very familiar type setting, an elementary school setting, a big building. All the classrooms are air-conditioned, and the fields, we have tennis courts, we also use them for volleyball, we have basketball courts, we have open blacktop, we have lots of fields, and we have enough classrooms for the program, so it really is a nice home.
I just have a question about the pre-K program and the summer ACE.
Sure.
If children require a one-to-one through the district, are they provided in the summer as well for both programs?
As part of their, as part of their meetings, their end-of-the-year CSE meetings, that's something that's discussed, and up on the board, I think I had in my K-8 enrichment program, we had nine one-to-one high school workers this year. So yes, we had nine high school workers that would work one-to-one with kids who have IEPs that were deemed that they needed extra support, and they would walk with them from class to class and help them participate in the activities.
Do those high school students receive some sort of training on working with the students?
They get some small training on the students' individual needs, meetings with the parents, phone calls and texts with the parents, and the parents see them in the morning when they do drop-off and when they get picked up. And these aren't really academic classes, so they're really just in how to help them participate and transition from class to class and make the best of their experience.
There are circumstances where adult one-to-ones are necessary.
Yes.
This is very dependent and individualized.
Yeah, we do have several...
If an aid is, is in place for, for academic purposes, and it's an academic class, then certainly we would, you know, try to do that sometimes due to the size of the class. It doesn't become necessary in the summer, so there's a discussion around it.
Thank you.
But Jim works with Dr. Cadone closely in making those determinations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Great job. Yes, as you, this has been an ongoing saga that began last summer. There was a good deal of dissatisfaction with the, just, I guess, the denseness of the old website.
We're Relay for Life.
Oh, the Relay for Life. I apologize. Okay. Sorry about that.
We'll go to that next one right after this.
See, I jumped ahead. All right. Of course you have to wait. Yeah, last year, as a matter of fact, we had a discussion about Relay for Life. We had certainly supported the concept, but this year, we are going ahead with incorporating it as part of the Southside Experience, so John Murphy is here tonight to talk a little bit about what we can anticipate and the date when it's going to be taking place. See the place, John.
Your preference. Do you, does he need to turn to be on camera?
This is good?
Yes.
Okay.
That's better. Much better.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and at the risk of being premature, I'd like to thank Dr. Johnson and the board for considering this and allowing us to participate for the first time ever in our first annual Relay for Life at Rockville Center. But for those of you who aren't familiar with Relay for Life, it's the signature fundraising effort for the American Cancer Society. It is presently occurring in 5,200 communities in 27 countries. The funds raised are in the hundreds of millions at this stage, but it's more than a fundraiser. If you haven't participated, I highly recommend that you do. The number of people who haven't been affected by cancer, both individually and their family, is getting unfortunately further and further and fewer and fewer. It's an event that can last between 12 to 24 hours, not just to raise funds, but to remember the loved ones that we've lost, to honor the survivors, and to raise money to put an end to cancer. So the website is already up and running. This was kicked off and initiated on January 2nd at the Rockville Center Village Board of Trustees meeting, where advisor Megan O'Brien and class officers Angela Suriel, Julia Puglazzi, and Sophia Harrison introduced the topic to the community and launched it. So the fundraising efforts have already started. The event itself will occur on Saturday, June the 2nd. As it is our inaugural event, it will be from 5 to 11. There are longer events, but we're starting in a contained space. The setup will be that Friday evening, because there's an SAT during the day at the high school, so they'll come up that Friday evening, set up, leave, and then come back at 3 o'clock to finish the setting. I just can't say, in our, in our early stages, the American Cancer Society has been unbelievably helpful and supportive, and that's ongoing in terms of conducting needs assessments and letting us know what they, what we need. The official kickoff, however, though, will occur during the third week in March. We're picking a time that's strategically placed well after Red and Blue and just before St. Baldrick's Day, which is another annual national event, that their focus is childhood cancer research. The hopes is, is that in kicking off our event just prior to that, not only can we advertise their event and raise funds for them, but engage in some type of a symbiotic relationship where we can both feed off of one another, both equally deserving events. So the event itself, and you can join in any one, any number of ways. You can donate as an individual, you can donate, you can join as a team, or you can just donate funds to the, to the Rockville Center, to the Rockville Center Clause. Most people join as a team, and the way that the event occurs, kickoff is at 5 o'clock. The central part of the football field is where teams are housed, located. The event starts, and this is, this is historically the process that all Relay for Life follow. There's an introduction, started with the cheerleading squad, color guard, introductory speeches, and starts with a survivor lap. That is where we invite cancer survivors to engage in the first lap of the track. And for the rest of the event, from 5 until 11 o'clock, there will constantly be somebody walking from one of the teams on the track, the concept being cancer doesn't stop, so neither should we in trying to find a cure. After the survivors make the first lap, and after a brief speech, they then adjourn to a survivor's banquet in the cafeteria. While they leave, all the other teams join in, and the concept is so that each team has at least one person walking the track for the duration of the event. You can take turns, you can walk holistically, but the, but the, the concept is to have a continual flow of energy flowing around the track. While that is occurring, other events will, 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 will occur. We ask that one supervising parent be assigned to each team, so if students are forming a team, we ask that they have one supervising parent. As the walk is occurring, there are also other activities, from face painting, the American Cancer Society provides a DJ, and other activities, both to keep the kids amused and to add vitality and vibrancy to the event. The DJ goes until around 10:30, and when it starts to get dark, another signature component of the Relay for Life are luminarya, which are illuminated bags that are designed by the participants that, that circle the track. So during the last hour, hour and a half, it's quite a, it's an amazing visual field. You have to see it to experience it, and we'll do a little something special with the, with the bleachers. The DJ makes an official closing. At 10:30, we have a few survivor stories, and that, and there goes the event. So the donations have already started. The word is out there already, teams have already formed, but we won't officially kickoff until mid-March. I just prematurely want to thank you and Dr. Johnson and the board for really giving this opportunity. We're excited, nervous, and apprehensive all at the same time.
John, what do you need from the school district?
Right now, we're working closely with Carol Rosetto, who actually has been an invaluable resource. She ran 10 of these while she was working at the Lawrence School District. We're also working with the American Cancer Society, who are willing and able to fund and sponsor certain things like cleanup. Right now, we don't need anything. Conducting a needs assessment based on the anticipated participation is difficult. We will be contacting, for instance, the local fire department and police department to make them aware of the event. We don't foresee any physical need for their presence, other than if they want to participate and join teams themselves. We will need custodial staff and security. Again, we're coordinating that with the American Cancer Society to see if, or if any responsibility will rest with the district as opposed to them.
Well, if anybody's using the building, we need district employees, so that'll be...
We envision not having the building open, well, other than the banquet room.
The banquet, okay.
And as if it was a football game, to close off that immediate area around the restrooms for that.
Will that, will the restrooms in that wing accommodate?
Oh, sure.
That many people?
Mm-hmm.
How many people do you anticipate?
I was afraid of that.
I know.
I don't know. I mean, I will tell you that there is a, another, an Oceanside Relay for Life event that weekend, so there are, these are fairly common, but it's our inaugural one, so I'm not expecting to fill the entire middle of the football field, which Carol was at a laugh at me when I used that as a goal, but it will be in the hundreds.
Laughed at you that it wouldn't happen or that it will happen?
Laughing that I, it's laughable to think that I could possibly fill the middle of a football field. She said, "You have no idea how many people it would take to do that."
Oh, okay, we don't understand how many people it would take to fill it, but I believe...
My sense of proportion is apparently off.
John, is there a rain date or is it a rain or shine event?
It's rain or shine, but if it became that... It's rain or shine, but if it became that, impossible. We'd move indoors.
Okay.
It would lessen the effect, but that would be the contingency plan.
The luminaries are battery lit, I'm assuming?
Well, they can be. They are, it depends on the event. They're either candlelit, or they come with sand in them. They're safe.
They're safe?
You say that with such...
How fireproof is our field?
It...
That's, you know, that's something to consider also.
We could go with battery operated.
Maybe not as fun, but I think, you know, I would believe that would be much safer on a plastic field.
When we get closer to the date, will you have examples of both, so that we can take a look at it?
Sure.
I think most of us would be inclined to go with the battery operated.
As would I. I just wanted to throw caution to the wind first.
Does it circle the track, or is it on the field itself?
It's outside of the track.
Right, so it's not on the field.
Oh, it's outside of the track?
Yeah.
On the periphery?
That's rubber, too.
Some of it, yeah. A good part of it is, right. It's all flammable.
I don't know. So I guess if you show us closer, too?
Mm-hmm. Or meltable.
No, fire.
If there are hundreds and hundreds of people that are anticipated, can we arrange for porta potties? Is that something?
We could, and they would supply them. Again, the American Cancer Society is more than willing, and we'll have a fairly, again, the last minute joining does occur, but we'll have a fairly good sense. And Ms. O'Brien, Ms. Rosetto, and the people who run this are fairly seasoned Relay for Life people, and they'll get a really good sense of what we can anticipate closer to the time.
One concern we had was the lighting. The track lighting.
Well, I don't envision needing football lights on for a couple of reasons, not the least of which it ruins the effect.
Right.
So walking lights, and we're going to have to play with that. Obviously, safety is the primary concern, and anything circling the building will obviously be well lit, but we won't need the football lights on.
Okay. And, you know, so you'll look more at that closer. If there are a lot of people, will those lights be sufficient for safe exit? Is that something you'll have to look into for us?
We're pretty confident that they will be, but yes, we'll explore that closer to the time.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sounds wonderful. We'll be forward to it.
Yes.
I just asked two of my board members if we would form a board of education and family team.
Ooh.
So that's something we'll talk about.
All right. Relay for website. Sorry about that. So, all right. Just to get back to the introduction I started before, we had trouble with the website, and had for a long time. We have recently switched over to a new website, and we thought it would be a good opportunity for us tonight to do a very, very brief demonstration of what the new website looks like. To date, so we think it solves the majority of the problems that we had with the older website, not the least of which was the ability to navigate easily through the website and find what you're looking for easily. We believe this one does it. I think it's more logical. It is easier to follow and easier to navigate. So Mr. Pelletieri has put together a little demonstration for us, so if you don't mind, Chris?
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. George Bernard Shaw once stated, "The only problem with communication is the mistaken belief it has taken place." And so I mistakenly, for years, used to take every document and every bit of information that we had here in Rockville Center Schools and tried to push it out to the community, and ended up creating this mess of too much information probably in too many places. Well, let's put it here. Let's put it there. Let's make sure people can find it here, in an attempt to almost over-communicate. And we had a website that was cluttered at times and difficult to navigate, difficult to find things. Last year, prompted by some of the things that happened with our host, Edline was the host of website, they started to have issues themselves, and there were days when our website would be down, hours, days even. We had no way to communicate with our school's community, other than phone calls at that time, or text things like that. Website's important to communicate our message. And so I asked Lauren Billig and Mike Anderson to work with our tech folks to look around and come up with a new site that was going to work better for us, and we believe, I believe, I thanked them for their diligence, and I believe we have found that site. This site is hosted by School Messenger, and it is a cleaner-looking site, I believe. There are prompts up here along the top. This is a brand-new link for us, Celebrate RVC. Anything that's great about Rockville Center Schools in terms of our Twitter feed, our pictures from Facebook, Rockville Center Schools in the news, things such as that, will be on the Celebrate RVC site. If you are a new parent to Rockville Center, we created a page. We actually had had one, but no one could find it, unfortunately, again, because I was putting too many things in there, I will admit. But if you are new to Rockville Center or thinking about moving to Rockville Center, this is the page. This is the landing page where you can come, find out all of our resources in the district, English and Spanish. There are a great many, there's a great deal of information in this resource packet, and you'll see prompts each place you go, things about our lunch program, places you can scan, things about transportation, anything you would need for our getting around the district and getting information on the district can be found on this parent resource packet on this, again, Celebrate RVC page. There's a page for parents, of course. This one I have to be careful with is the inclination and desire to get as much information out again, but if you are over, putting too much out there, over-communicating, it can become a problem. We have a staff page as well for our teachers, departments and programs. Curriculum instruction has a page. Our departments and programs all have pages. If we go back to our home, another neat piece, I think, of the new website is the calendar. You'll see that this little calendar section here on the audience's left pulls directly from our district calendar. So there's a quick way of seeing what's going on around the district any particular day when you first open the webpage. You'll see here our calendar. This, again, is throughout the district. You see color coding for each school. It tells you all the different things that are happening throughout the district. Calendar's very important to where a lot of people go. I understand when they, it's probably a page that they use more than any other page, getting information about what's going on around the district. And you can hone in on your particular school, or if you have a child in several, if you have a child in elementary, middle, and high, you can hone in on those schools as well. These quick links, I think, are fantastic. They take you immediately to, for example, lunch menus, things that are important to us, like what's for lunch today at the high school. This is really in-depth. Nothing is, there is no lunch today. Everything was going great until I clicked on this lunch menu. It's going to work. I have faith. There it is. Wow, there's a lot to load there. Spice of the month. Look at that. Cumin. Nacho plato with seasoned beef, corn tortilla, chicken tenders. Might someone like that. Chicken quesadilla. Taco Tuesday. Okay. Steam broccoli. The news section takes us through recent information that's happening in the district. This is on a scroll. It will be here. You'll always have this landing page here, and you'll read things about, look, I'm going to take advantage. Dr. Leahy, right now, is going to thank me later for clicking on Winter Ace.
Thank you, Mr.
It's time to, five bucks, Dr. Leahy. It's time to sign up for Winter Ace, right, Dr. Leahy?
That's correct.
Scroll, 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 scroll. And I can register for Winter Ace right here. I can pay now with different, can I pay with a credit card online now, Dr. Leahy? You can. We have a district page. Dr. Johnson. We even have pictures of, I can't pick that picture. Dr. Leahy, great picture, Dr. Leahy. Mr. Bartels, Dr. Johnson. And you'll note that there are contact, there's contact information, even for me, email addresses and phone numbers for people, and links directly to our pages that we have. So we really try to be, get as much information out as we can, but not be burdensome, not clutter the page. One thing I want to show you real quick, we can look at the media from the Board of Ed page. We're also trying to be as accessible as possible. And to that end, you'll see our Board of Ed meetings are now on YouTube. And while on YouTube, I'm just going to jump this forward Is anyone talking in that? I just want to show you this. You now have subtitles, again, in an attempt to be as accessible as possible to folks. YouTube provides a service. We had been planning on budgeting for something like this with Vimeo and other services because regulations change that require this type of change, and YouTube is providing this service now. So there was no cost associated with the closed captioning for our Board of Ed meetings going forward. So we'll have that ability in terms of access. And then just lastly, I think, I'll go back to home, and we'll ask someone in the audience to shout out a language. What language would you like to tag along? So our site now is completely translated
Wait a minute.
into other languages. And here's Tagalog, as requested. So again, in an attempt to become as accessible as possible to as many people as possible, again, this is something that is done through Google Translator, and our new site is able to provide this. So new site, the app stays the same. There is no change initially with the app. We are looking at our app. It is working. That's the feedback I get. When I did email parents, and I thank emails, I thank the parents for getting back to me. We did a little mini survey, just how they like to communicate with the district. A lot of people like robo-calls. I'm sure a lot of our students like when Mr. Bartels called a couple days last week to notify people that they were staying home, those difficult inclement weather days. But they liked robo-calls with important information, email, and the app, the push notifications to the app. So the app is doing well. We're going to stay with the app that we have now, but we are looking at streamlining and perhaps moving over the School Messengers app, so we have one type of device that's, one type of platform that's going out to everybody. Another neat thing about this, if I look at it on my iPad, it will shrink to my iPad. If I look at it on my phone, it will shrink to my phone. So I don't lose anything. It stays on the same screens. It just makes it a little bit smaller, but you don't lose any part of the website. So we welcome people's feedback. There is a note in there. There's a superintendent's page with a note from Dr. Johnson that talks about feedback, if you're willing to provide it or interested in providing it, with an email link in there. And we look forward to hearing from the community about the site and ways we can communicate more and more with them.
That's how you want the feedback, through the, right back through?
Right, right through. There is a link and an email address right in there.
Okay.
What was the results of the email you sent out asking what was the form of communication?
Robo-call.
Is that what the...
Yeah, yeah. That surprised me, because I thought it annoyed a lot of people. But there's such important information, like, we're careful about not overdoing it, right? There's an, again, over-communicate. There's an, there are times when you get that phone call, you know, like, and if it's for every single thing, then that could become annoying. But we're careful with how often we use it, and it is important information. So that was the lead way people wanted to hear from the district for important information. Again, email was up there, and a push notification. People like the push notification. It comes right to the phone as soon as they turn it on. They don't even have to turn it on, and there's going to be a notification there for important things. And we are constantly, like, for example, with the snow, we did, and Lauren Billig does a great job with this. We did robo-call with Robert, and then the push notification, and then on the website, we're just trying to make sure we hit all platforms. People talked about text messages, and that's something we're going to start to look at as well.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lauren, for all your work.
Yes, thank you.
And it is a work in progress, so we are still trying to mold it to all our needs and fit all our, you know, all the particular things we wanted to do. All right. Items for discussion we're up to. We're going to speak of the 2018-19 calendar and the 2019-20 calendar.
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Bartels and the committee that he chairs. They put together two years of calendar. As you know, what we do each year is to take the following year's calendar, in this case, it's 2018-19, presented somewhat formally to the community with the anticipation that within a month or so, we will then adopt it. Tonight is strictly for the purpose of informing the public and informing the board about the recommended calendar. Doesn't mean that it's cast and sewn at this point, but nevertheless, it is pretty far down the line in terms of its development. The one thing that is really, should be noted, particularly for the public, since it probably would come as a surprise to most people, is that for the first time in my memory, the school year ends in the middle of the week. The State Board of Regents and the State Education Department decided this year to begin Regents on Tuesday, June 18th, and complete the Regents cycle on, with a Regents Rating Day on Wednesday, June 26th, which would be then the last day of school for elementary children. If you take a look at the, we'd still come back in for a Superintendent's Conference Day in August, but what this does is it really enables us to put together a meaningful calendar for all of us, and at the same time, begin to schedule all of our holidays in such a way that in the event that we run out of snow days during the school year, we can dip into some of our holidays at the latter part of the, at the end of the school year, without jeopardizing any of the instruction or state aid. So we also provide to the community a draft of the 2019-2020 school year calendar, which interestingly enough, also ends on June 26th, but in that particular year, June 26th is a Friday. So again, both years are relatively easy to deal with because of the extension that the state provided in 1819 by moving it to the 26th in the middle of the week. So if there are questions that members of the board would like to have, you know, one of the questions that kind of jump off the page at us is, what do we do about graduation, and what do we do about the prom? Those things generally are scheduled a year in advance, and are usually, in this case, would be Friday, the 21st for graduation, Thursday, the 20th for the prom. So it's a little bit different than what we're anticipating, and raises a lot of questions, but nevertheless, that's what we're anticipating at this point. So again, are there any questions of us, or Mr. Bartels, or Mr. Murphy? This would be a great time to bring them up and talk about them.
My first question is that the total days, I just noticed, normally, we look at 183 school days and a conference day for 184. We're on 181 school days and three conference days. Is that, does that have to do with the contract?
Yes. Right. That was a result of the agreement that we have with the Teachers' Association.
And that, okay.
Yeah, if you notice, what one of the, what we ended up doing is we have one before the opening of school. What this calendar enabled us to do is to place, we don't have to have kids come to school on the 6th, which is Election Day. If we move the calendar from the end of the school year, from the 26th to the 21st, it put us in a very uncomfortable situation, I believe, Mr. Bartels, of having to come to school on the 6th of November.
Yeah.
So what we did was, we still, it's still a workday, but we made it a Superintendent's Conference Day, and we do not have kids attending school that day.
So why did we do that? So, why did we do that and not, you know, and not move the May 24th day? Do, I guess my question is, are there two give back days, or is it one?
Well, in the contract, there were two, but based on the CPI, it looks like there's going to be one give back day as part of our negotiations. So, the one give back day will be the day before Thanksgiving.
Right.
All right, which is that triangle, which is the 21st.
Okay.
That's where everybody comes to work, but the teachers do not. And that's a Superintendent's Conference Day for everybody, but not for the teachers. And that's the third day.
So, why do we have a day off on the 6th? That, that, and, why not take the day off from, from May and put it to the 6th? And therefore, pick up an extra day?
Of instruction?
Of instruction.
So, you're saying to lose the 24th, the Friday, the 24th?
Well, because we're down to 181. Why, yeah, why are we down to 181?
Doesn't that take us to 185 then? And then, if you take the 24th, make it a school day?
I want 182 the next year.
Well, usually, it used to be 183.
Right.
We went to 182.
So, we...
Well, where are kids going to school? The 6th?
On the 24th.
No.
Okay.
Kids go to school on the 24th, and then you're off completely on the 6th.
The 1st and 3rd.
So, those are two days you swap.
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, give everybody off an Election Day.
Right. Unless I'm ruining your plans, Mr. Bellier. You're nothing.
We're just discussing that now.
I am ruining your plans.
That's a big staff development loss.
That would be a loss for Staff Development Day.
It is.
It is.
It's instruction versus staff.
No, but staff development was what makes instruction effective, so I think that would be a big decision.
Yeah, why don't you say that? Because that's, that's what the committee considers. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, that, it is, for staff development purposes, that is a very important day, to get additional time in.
I would think.
At the end of the year anyway?
No.
No, but, no, no, no. You lose, you lose that, you move it to the beginning of the school year, that holiday, and you lose it as a makeup day in the event that we run out of snow days. Isn't that what you just said? Isn't that what the committee said?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's the thinking, Liz, for, for...
Keep that with the calendar committee, and this is, this is their feedback on both years?
On both years. Yeah, it's a very similar calendar in both years, with the exception of ending on Wednesday or Friday.
Thoughts, Mrs. Hackett?
I'm fine with these. I agree, I'd like the staff development day in place.
Okay, just, we're going to put this on the website for comment, or do we have to adopt it this evening?
We have the next, the next regularly scheduled open meeting, I mean, a regular meeting, is not until February 28th. We have a number of meetings in between, some of them public meetings for the budget, but the next regularly scheduled meeting would be the 28th. I don't think that's too late to do this, but we could put this on the website. Yes, Mark?
Understand, we can.
And put big draft letter across it.
Yeah. We've done that in the past. Right, tonight's the night that we inform the public, and then we act on it later on.
Okay.
And so, do you want to just talk about, so, for the 1819, you're considering having graduation on the 21st prior to, prior to the last day of school? Are we concerned about Regents? And when will we know when Regents are?
I was just trying to figure that out before I, we may not know the actual Regents' schedule for that year until next year, right? Do we know June? Do we have the schedule yet for June? Did they give it?
We know the date, the beginning and end date, we don't know the physical...
Even for this year?
Yes.
We have the schedule?
Yeah.
And it comes, yeah, it's probably not going to be available until next year.
When did we get the schedule?
Early summer. How many days early is early summer? Three months.
Well, that's, that's late for planning a prom.
Right.
But booking a prom, you don't even, you book it, you need to book it usually at least a year after.
Juniors do that before they become, I mean, they do that at the end of the school year, do they not?
Kathy, how long in advance do we typically, typically book the prom?
September.
Septe, so, September of the school year, you book the prom?
No, no, it's earlier.
No, that's, it was, that's what I was just saying, it's, no, it's, they do it in June.
Yeah.
Either May or June, John.
I'm sorry, post-prom, you book in September. The prom is booked at the beginning of June.
So, if we let the PTA book the prom, we still won't know what's going to happen?
Right.
If the PTA doesn't book the prom, that's a cool...
No.
But...
The week, week of prom, you post-prom.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't do the prom and graduation the following Thursday, Friday? Is there a reason against that? If the last day of school is the 26th, and we want to do it Thursday, Friday, why not just move it one more week, and then it doesn't matter what the Regents' calendar says?
Because school's over already.
But...
You're a teacher.
It's graduation. Graduation happens at the end.
So, if we had graduation on the 28th?
Right, and the prom the 27th. Instruction's over, there's no conflict in testing, no matter what the calendar comes out of.
Our staff, the, the school year has already ended.
We, we...
So, then our staff is released at that point, and we'd have to figure out how to have people come back and work with us.
Okay.
I have consent, Jack, to all the graduations. That's our graduation.
Right.
I want to get the kids back for graduation, too. Sure.
How do we do that?
Dr. Johnson, has the Regents ever done, have they ever done this?
No, 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 that's right. No, this is, this is a first. Just understand where this is coming from. It's not, it's not, there are a number of religious groups that are seeking equal treatment in New York State, so that, there are Muslim holidays, there is a Chinese New Year, and there is a Hindu holidays that are now being considered and placed on the calendar in a number of school districts, not just here in Nassau County, but in New York City, and in some of the other cities in the state. And it's, it's, when you begin to take a look at those days and consider them, along with some of the other holidays that have been considered a part of our calendar planning process, which are the, basically, the Jewish and the Christian holidays, once you start expanding the numbers of holidays and include all of those religious holidays, or secular holidays, whatever they may be, you end up with not enough days in the year to plan. And that was, that's what precipitated the discussion about moving this Regents' week to the 26th. And I can tell you that, because I was part of the discussion, that when the school districts that were involved with contemplating a calendar with these holidays, interestingly enough, it was either February week gone and ending the February vacation, or it was extending the school year, and the state decided to extend the school year. And that's what, that's what school district, in other words, when you take a look at the February break, by the way, it only arrived on our doorstep back in the 70s when we had the gas crisis.
Save energy.
You know, this is not a tradition that goes back, and it was precipitated by a pro, it was supposedly introduced as a solution to the gasoline shortage problem and the fuel oil, so that we would not have to heat the buildings for one week during the middle of February.
But then everybody...
That's where that started.
Vermont to go skiing. He's a gas tank.
Nowadays, people look at it as a, as an opportunity to allow their kids to recover for a week.
Well, to clean the, to clean...
Right. In other words, the, the highest rate of absenteeism is usually during the month of February. Kids, once they're separated from one another and from the school, have a chance to get well again, and then come back and not get sick again until, whatever. You know, I mean, there's all kinds of thinking that...
But nobody wants to take it away. Nobody wants to lose it.
Right, and the skiing industry has been the, truly, the beneficiary of that. Grandma in Florida also gets a chance to see her grandchildren. So, I mean, you know, all of those things have contributed to a, what now has become a real tradition in New York State. And interestingly enough, when it, when push came to shove, and the decision had to do with either getting rid of the February vacation and dealing with the pushback on that, or moving the date to the 26th, the state decided to move it to the 26th and not deal with the February vacation.
Oh, yeah.
But it does create problems that I'm not, I'm not sure. But just, just so we all understand, that we are certainly not the only school district that are looking at having the prom and graduation on that weekend. The vast majority of schools that I know of in Nassau County, who had scheduled their graduation for that weekend, are fully anticipating a, that their schedule go forward as planned. So, they're going to have their graduations that weekend, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. John, have you heard, I mean, you know, there's a principals group to meet also, I'm sure that, that's probably been a discussion at the table among principals as well.
No one's decided, but that is the general tendency, that people maintain the same prom, graduation, protocol that they have in place now.
Yeah, and we revert back to the regular calendar scheduling the following year.
Well, I can understand having graduation in the evening, even if you have a Regents' on Friday morning, but I can't understand having a prom Thursday night if you have a Regents' Friday morning.
Right.
That's not, that, that's going to be, you know...
It's unfair.
It's problematic, and it's not fair to the, the students that have gone through 12 years and want this day to be special, and then they are worried the next morning they have to get, you know, come back from the prom and go take a Regents'. I just don't think that's doable. I mean, anything's doable, but I don't think it's acceptable to do that.
I think it's problematic, also, even having a Regents' on Thursday and having a prom that night.
Yeah, I agree.
Because prom starts at, what, 4?
No, before that.
3?
You have to get ready.
Pre-prom.
12 o'clock, and then you go take pictures. So, I, I would, I would have difficulty accepting, you know, you know, prom on Thursday if there were a final, if there are Regents the day of or the day after.
And not necessarily, it's not necessarily only seniors who attend the prom.
Right.
Right.
There may be an underclassman going as well, which would, they may, their Regents' schedule may be varied slightly as for themselves.
When would we have to make a decision on that? Do we have, when, when, when do we have to notify Hofstra? Look, there are two separate decisions here. One is graduation, and I, and I, and then the second is the prom. You know, there are schools that take them totally out of sequence with one another and have a prom, let's say, in April.
Then we have to book it already.
Well, what I'm saying is that they, they don't, they don't have the two connected in any way whatsoever. They'll do it to another holiday period. So, I don't know what the solution is to this, but I suspect that we're not the only one that's going to run into a bumpy road when it comes to figuring out how to deal with both the prom and graduation. We do it for safety reasons.
Understand.
Just so you know. I mean, that is a tradition that has been going on in the school district, not a happy, not one that, not that our seniors like to live with. They'd like it to be otherwise. But just understand why we do it.
I mean, we, we can accept the calendar, we can approve the calendar, but those two days are very important where they fall, and we, we need to make these plans a year in advance. So, we need to make these plans relatively soon for both, both events. So, how are we going to, you have to figure out the guessing game that's going to take us to a safe place, is what it is.
All right. One of the, one of the things that we may wish to do, following up on what Mark was saying before, when we put this calendar up, is let people know that what we're still planning to do is considering the possibility of having graduation on that Friday and the prom the day before, and allow the, in other words, that this, that that's what this implies, and therefore, give people an opportunity, we'll have an opportunity to hear back from, possibly hear back from people who have something to say about it, other than just us here at this table.
Well, it could happen, it could be very easily happen that way unless there are Regents on Friday or Thursday. That's, that'll be, and the parents who have feedback will know that. But you could put it out that way and see what you give them.
Look, we, we've had this discussion with the state, and they said that they believe they can put together a calendar of exams in which there is nothing that's going to affect people from either after Thursday, so that they should be able to fit, and Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, all of the exams. There are six of them that would have import for kids who might be graduating that year.
So, you're saying the 18th, 19th, and 20th? Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, right.
There would be no exams for seniors on the 24th or the 25th?
I, typically, the exams that could affect seniors would be?
Physics?
Physics.
And those, and those would be given on the next to last day of school?
Usually at the end of the exam cycle.
Which could be the 25th?
Or the 24th.
It would be, that would be, yes, it would be, that would be the Tuesday, the Monday and the Tuesday. See, that, and they run at the same time on the same day.
I have no problem.
They sometimes double up exams. I mean, if you're going to take chemistry, the likelihood of taking physics, so they may put physics and chemistry on the same day and do it earlier. So, I, look, there, there's no easy answer on this one, Mark. At this point, we just don't know.
All right. We'll put it out there, and then we'll talk about it at our next meeting. But in the meantime, well, I guess you can do, or reaching out, you can. It's a big deal.
There are three decisions.
I know we're about the academics, but this is a big deal for our seniors, and I would feel terrible depriving them of the experience. And you know, if there's a Regents' the next day, a lot of people won't go to prom because of that. And that's a shame, because...
A lot of people will get into big fights with their parents.
Right. And that's a shame, because they deserve the right to enjoy that part of their, you know, their graduation, and to take that from them, you know, I'm very, I'm very uncomfortable.
And as well as if prom and graduation were, were the 21st and the 22nd, for instance, and if they had Regents' on the 24th and 25th, they lose, in essence, two days of time to prepare.
Yeah, that's true.
That's right.
Yeah. Graduation is for the 26th.
Ain't no good solution.
You have a lot of contemplating to do, John. Mr. Murphy?
Say that again, what, what dates, Mark? The 20th?
If, if, if you have prom and graduation on Friday and Saturday, the 21st and the 22nd, or even the 20th, Thursday, the 20th and 21st, and if anybody has Regents' exams the following week, they have, in effect, lost two days of preparation time. Graduation day is taken up between rehearsal and graduation. Prom is all in the prep and, and everything else. They probably end up losing three days, because on the third day, they're not getting up.
All right.
And one, one other thing, we'll be thinking about doing the 25th, 26th, so graduate on that Wednesday and do the prom Tuesday, the 25th, because there's no exams on the 26th.
No, but there could be exams on the 25th.
I know it's the middle of the week. Say that again.
No, it wouldn't be. You wouldn't have to worry about it.
I think the issue there is family. A lot of family...
We're always faced with that same issue, Mark. And because our graduation has traditionally been on that Fri, Friday, oh no, Regents' Rating Day was the day before the Thursday. That's right, the last Regents' would be Wednesday.
Even when, even when Regents' Rating Day was on Friday, there was usually just an RC... Even when regents rating day was on Friday, there was usually just an RCT on Thursday or Sunday.
All right, you know what, look, we-
We can, we'll put it on the website, ask for input, and we'll-
And we'll go back and do some more homework.
We'll do some homework, and on February 4th at our meeting, our regular meeting, we will-
Well, look, one of the things we can take a look at are the other options, the suggestion about having the prom and graduation on the Tuesday and Wednesday, is that what you just, we were suggesting, so that we consider that at least, we can do that. Why don't we take a look at that?
The Tuesday, Wednesday.
Pardon me?
The Tuesday, Wednesday.
The Tuesday, Wednesday, right.
It's just that the question is, like Liz said, about family coming in, it's the middle of the week, but it might be your best option, because then you aren't hitting any exams.
If you're focusing exclusively on the students, that would probably be a better option. If you're looking at the relatives who are coming into town and having to spend the entire week instead of a weekend with their families-
It's just their ability to come into town.
Right.
It's not things like that.
It's cheaper.
The fights will be cheaper, that's true.
Traveling on a Tuesday than on Friday, right.
The world works on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
You know what, there's no, listen, there's no easy answer.
No, there's not.
And we understand that.
So we'll put it out for comment, and we'll bring it back.
This is a foray into the unknown by the state, as well as it is for all of us, and so we've got, you know, it, there's a wrinkle now that we have to deal with that we haven't had to look at in the past. So we'll go back to the drawing board and consider a couple of other options, which I guess maybe even in one of the budget sessions, if you wouldn't mind, we can have another calendar discussion before the 28th.
Okay, in the public work session?
Well, when we say public, they're public work sessions, the budget sessions are really open to the public. If you wouldn't mind having a discussion at one of those sessions-
We'll have to shorten Robert's-
Presentation.
...
It'll break his heart, but nevertheless, yeah.
Robert's going to be crying over that one.
Yeah. We'll go back and take a look at it, and we'll also try to survey what other places are doing as well, and get a better idea of what's happening elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Call to policy on regulation, 7380, Dignity for All Students Act policy. Stage one, anybody have any questions?
I'd like to start off with one.
Okay, Noreen. Noreen?
I just want to let you know why we're doing this.
Yes, that's my question.
Okay, that's the question. So there's two events that occurred. One is that the state has combined the way that we report DASS incidents and VADA incidents into one reporting form, one reporting format. So that was one of the things that happened that affected kind of review of this policy. The second is that the state comptroller's office just released a report of an audit they did of the state education's implementation of the Dignity for All Students Act. That came out in October. And that had some findings and recommendations, some deficits in some areas statewide in schools across the state. So they looked at the policy, and they wanted to emphasize key terms that the comptroller and SED were using maybe not so interchangeably. They wanted to clarify language. They saw some duplication in the policy, so they reduced some of the language. And as they said, they looked at the comptroller's key findings, any areas of deficits, for example, anything they wanted to emphasize, like they found that some districts weren't conducting the training appropriately, so they rewrote the training aspect of the policy. And some districts were disposing of records sooner than they should have, the DASS investigations, and so they wanted to emphasize that. So that's what you'll see in this. And so when Jack and I went through, we kind of did a crosswalk from the old policy, and wherever we saw that the language had to align with the new state language, we changed it out. So there's not much in the substance of it that has changed.
Sue? And Mark?
No.
Oh.
All right, little things. What? No?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Little things on page four. In the event an investigation verifies that harassment, bullying, and should be or discrimination occurred. And then the third sentence, to eliminate any hostile environment. You just copied off.
I did.
Create more positive culture and climate, eliminate any hostile-
Eliminate any-
They can't see that far.
Any hostile environment, create a more positive-
They keep- We're doing little things, just on page two. We're missing a space for if a Dignity Act coordinator paragraph, appointment as Dignity Act coordinator, second line, just needs a space.
Any other little things? All right. On four, do we include volunteers that work with our children anywhere? It says an employee is someone who gets compensated, and, but we do have some coaches that aren't compensated by the school district, and are they bound by all the rules that our employees are?
I think that if you go along with what our attorney said with regard to employee, that volunteers have the same status as employee. So wherever the word employee is used, you can also then substitute the word volunteer. Now, if you want us to do it explicitly, we could probably do that, but understand that any legal interpretation, because remember, what we do now is that all of our volunteers end up in a personnel actions report and are treated exactly the same from the point of view of the board and liability and what have you, as if they were an employee. So from that point of view, they have the same status and the same level of expectation about how they conduct themselves with other people in the school district.
Is it important to have that in writing, Noreen?
We can check on that. I-
I will check on that, and I think, yes, it is important. I think we should be as explicit as possible.
You know, John, it's always, if you can be explicit, without changing the meaning of the entire policy, it probably would be a good idea for us to put a statement in here which says that anybody who is a volunteer will also be considered employee, or put in parentheses, we'll figure out how to do that, but I think if we are explicit, it would be a good idea for us to do that.
That's the only thing-
Rather than allow that interpretation, in other words, then it's open for interpretation. Let's not do that.
And we try not, we try not to leave that for anybody. Anybody else? All right.
I just have one question. The reports, we list here that any-
Page?
Sorry, page three of the regulation, all reports have to be reported within one day to the superintendent, principal, and in writing within two days. Have we been able to do that so far?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Within one school day, does it say? Or one work day? Do we need to include that, be more specific that way?
It says within one school day.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It says one school day and two school days.
Okay. All right. We'll move them. All right. All right, opportunity for superintendents, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, thank you very much. I really just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year, and interesting how we started off the new year this year with a cold snap that we had, I think the second coldest 13-day stretch of all time. And then in addition to that, I want to thank the custodial and the maintenance staff for the work that they did during the snowstorm, cleaning it off and getting us ready for the opening of school on that Monday. And only to say, here we go again, next Tuesday, the next snowstorm is on its way, so hopefully we will have enough days this year in order to accommodate the snow. The thing we worry about, and I must say again, our staff is the rain coming on Friday with all of the snow that's on the roof. We need to protect our facilities, and we intend to do just that, so, anyway, again, it's working with our custodial staff and our maintenance staff. They feel like they own these buildings, which is great, and they feel very committed to the buildings, and I feel very, very good about the work that they do, so my thanks to all of them. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for board members?
I'll start, sure. Also, I'd like to wish everyone a happy new year. I'd like to say thank you to Covert, their performance was awesome today. It was very cool to watch the students, and Stella's a great program, so it's nice to see what they do, so congratulations to them. Also, I wanted to ask, if a parent didn't get a robo-call during the snowstorm, what should they do? Because some parents didn't, not.
Yes, and, no, go ahead, Rob.
As you said, they should contact my office. What I did do this time, because I did get several phone calls already, that some people got one phone call, but they didn't get it on all their phones, what I did was I sent this message out as an outreach message, which just goes to the primary phone number. Because I was doing it the day before, I didn't think, we needed to get it to every single phone number, because I can send it out one of two ways, as an outreach message, which is just a general message, which will go to the primary phone number, or an emergency message, which will go to every phone number that we have on file for the person. So I didn't think it necessary to do that the day before, since we do have, besides the robo-call and push notifications, it's on the website, and I'm sure everybody was looking for that information, so that's why I sent it out as an outreach message.
From the people I heard that didn't get it, they were like, why didn't I get it? So I think it might be important to push it out to everybody all the time, no matter-
That makes sense, because my primary's my home, and that's not my number anymore, so that's why I didn't get it.
Okay. She was talking about people, but it's also board members, so she didn't want to say that one. So maybe we just do-
Just send it to everybody for those, okay?
Because there were quite a few people that said they-
You know, it's very good to know, though. I mean, it's a learning experience for us as well. Go with the, you know, even though there's a lot of redundancy in people's lives and they get upset with the fact that they're getting four phone calls at one time, but-
If it bothers you, just have fun.
But, you know what, I think lesson to be learned is, I'd rather overdo than underdo.
For that.
For this particular, right, yeah, so we'll do that.
Okay. It's not like we're announcing the play. We're announcing, you're not going to school, make arrangements with your children, and make arrangements with work, so it has a little more weight. It needs a little more, make sure everybody gets it.
If we called three people in the district, I have a suspicion that the rest of the district would find out very quickly.
That being said, that information was-
It is amazing how news gets around.
-out there very fast.
It does.
But it's good to know that, because then people might change their primary number. That was, that was why I asked.
Okay.
So that was good to know.
That information was on RVC Moms before-
Before the call went out, actually.
Well, there was information out there at 2:00, before you even thought to make that call, so that you have to be careful with also.
Are you serious? I mean, we were-
Yep, there were some people-
We were meeting internally at that point.
-calling at 2:00 in the afternoon, or something like that, and it wasn't from the school district number, but it was a call fashioned after a school district call.
Yeah, we knew probably around 2:30 in the afternoon. You know, look, and when you were looking at the snow predictions, even after midnight, they were saying three to six, we ended up with 15. So when you took a look at the collection of predictions that were going on during that afternoon, we knew pretty well that there was, that we were going to get more than the six inches, so, and we knew that by 2:00 in the afternoon. Maybe they were guessing. They guessed right.
Hoping.
They were hoping.
Hoping.
Also, just congrats to all the athletes and coaches tonight. They did a fantastic job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs. McNulty?
I'm Mrs. McNulty.
Oh, Mrs. Atkins, I'm sorry.
I'm very impressed with Covert, and the amount of lines that those children could recite was incredible. They're elementary school students, so bravo. The athletes, that's a great season, so proud to see all those students up there, and the coaches, so many of them with accolades, it's just incredible, so congratulations. Thank you to Robert and the custodial staff for all the snow work. I think, you know, I appreciated having the heads up the day before. I think it helps parents who work and have to make accommodations and things for their children, so I for one appreciated that, you know, knowing in advance. I also wanted to just thank Chris Pelletieri, and Lauren Billig, and Mike Anderson. When I worked at Hofstra, we did a redo of our website, and when we took it down and had to put it back together, we realized how much information was actually up there, and to have to do that is no small feat, it is a huge job. I think when I was in alumni relations, we had over 100 pages alone in our department, and it was just a huge project, so-
The webmasters at the schools did a great job as well, I have to give them a shout out.
It's, I think it's wonderful, I think it's well-planned, it looks great, and I know it's a big job, so thank you so much for that. And also, thank you and congratulations to Dr. Zouar and the music department on all their concerts. I loved seeing everybody's pictures. I didn't get to go to all the concerts, but it was a really nice concert season, and that also, I think, was a lot of work by a lot of people, staff and teachers and administrators, so thank you for that.
Mr. Mason?
Thank you. Excuse me. First, just echo happy new year to everyone again, and congratulations to our student athletes. And our Covert students took us from Shakespeare, and they mentioned Shaw, and those fourth graders were, will be participating in the high school student-directed plays a number of years from now. And you can see, these are the future actors, directors, and playwrights. And our program, just as our music program, it takes you, where you're just learning the craft, and you're progressing through, and you can see the beginning, and not, hopefully not the end, but a much more advanced stage. So we never, it never ceases, our kids never cease to educate us. Budget season is coming up. Please educate yourself, attend, ask questions, learn, any and all help that we as a community can provide is beneficial to all. Thank you.
Mrs. Deale?
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat everything everybody else said, but assume I did, sorry. I'm just going to add that I want to congratulate our, all of our students are participating in Student Directed. For those who don't know, Student Directed is an amazing, an amazing feat that our IB Theater students put together. They write, they direct, they perform, they invite other students. You'll be able to see it on our television show channel-
19.
19 and 30.
And 36.
Do we have that on our website yet? Access to our videos?
The-
Like things like Student Directed, or musicals, and things like that.
Anything that's previously been up there.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's really something very special, so I encourage, it's already over, sorry, you can see it next year, but you can see it on television, but it's fabulous, so I congratulate them and encourage everybody to see it next year.
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy new year. As, if Mr. Mason says we'll look forward to the future of those students, I can't imagine how great it will be, because they were, to me, they were great now, so the future should be phenomenal for our drummers, if they participate. We do have, the next two meetings we have are public works sessions that will be in the boardroom, and our next regular board event meeting is February 28th. That'll be in the comments room.
Comments, right.
Comments room. And then we will start, that's a budget work session in the public, so we will be into the budget then. And that is it for our comments. Opportunity for visitors, if visitors should come up and speak about anything we spoke about, or anything at all. Please give your name and address.
My name is Marian Peterson, at 407 Hempstead Avenue in Rockville Center, New York. I'm a SEPT rep for the high school. I'm two- Two points that came up today were about the Regents classes. I think, Mr. Mason, you asked, are there ways that the Regents Review classes maybe could get better results, or, I don't know if necessarily it could have helped the geometry Regent, but I worked for the past, I guess, five years trying to get one of the sections of each topic, each subject for a Regent Review class, to be geared towards special ed and at-risk kids. I guess if we took a geometry Regent Review class, there may be three, two or three sections. Maybe one of them, we, for the past five years, we've tried to say, maybe one of them can be just set aside for special ed and at-risk kids. And one of the reasons is that it's, you know, it was raised actually at a SEPT meeting, I guess, five years ago, was raised here, Chris, when we began this conversation, by two parents who happened to work in the district, who have special ed kids. And their point was, they're spending $250 per Regent Review class, and their child is normally in an academic enrichment class in a much smaller setting, and now they're in a Regent Review class that's quite large, you know, maybe 20 students, plus students. For a special ed student, that's, you know, it doesn't really, it doesn't work. It's not what happens in the classroom, it's not what happens at the school. It seems like it would make sense if we could have something more geared towards them and, you know, work with that population. And I, you know, in considering it, I would ask you to take, if you could take a look at the percentage of the REP and 504 kids that failed the geometry Regent. Maybe just get, you know, do some research and do some data to see that these are probably the kids that are failing the Regents. And wouldn't it make sense if we had three sections of a Regent Review class, to take them apart from the mainstream, do a smaller section, maybe have a better-trained special ed teacher in the classroom to help them, and see how it goes? Try it for, try it for a year, and see if it makes a difference. That was one of the points that we've, we've tried to work for the, for the past number of years and haven't had any success. The other thing that was raised this evening, something that's been passionate to me for years, is the summer program. My son, John, is in the 10th grade here. When he started, before we started kindergarten, we had our CSE meeting, and the district said, we want John, who was at Jacob's Ladder from two and a half years of age, with a one-on-one, with a SEAT. We want him to attend the pre-K camp. We feel it's very important. We feel it's important enough that we're going to pay for John to attend the summer camp program. I was all ready to go to the summer camp program. About a week and a half, two weeks before, I find out that his SEAT, that he's had since he's two, two and a half at Jacob's Ladder, will not be able to attend the camp with him. He doesn't have a SEAT because he's a, you know, an easygoing child. He's a, you know, child, he was a child with behavioral issues on the autism spectrum. I had no option at that point. I had no option for camp. And I worked hard for, in the past years, this has been a passion of mine, and I thank Tara for raising it tonight, raising some of the questions as to why a child with special needs can't have a one-on-one. The SEAT was not allowed to come into the classroom. The SEAT is a, you know, a person that basically shadows John and makes sure he wouldn't hurt another child, that he wouldn't run, he was a runner, he was a bolter. The SEAT is paid by the county. So after working with Noreen for many visits, and, you know, we had, you know, quite honest and blunt conversations about this, she agreed to maybe have some high school students, if it was necessary. A high school student may work for some special needs preschoolers, it wouldn't work for most. I was told that the American Disability Act doesn't entitle John to, you know, have a, have a one-on-one in this program, in this pre-K, and I think that might be what you were alluding to. I don't know. I'm an attorney, but I don't know what the American Disability Act, I'm not a civil rights attorney, but I'm gathering from the, from the language that it wasn't academic, and that's perhaps why John wouldn't have had the opportunity to attend the pre-K camp. I would ask that, you know, I've been committed to this special ed community for a long time, and this has been a passion of mine, that a child with special ed needs, with, you know, disabilities, be able to attend. And if you have to give a one-on-one that's a competent person, a high school student wouldn't have been able to manage John. You know, these children, you're trying to teach them that an alarm going off, you're trying to get them to use to fire alarms in buildings, that's part of this camp, part of this, this whole experience, being in the school setting. That would send some children with special needs, you know, to have, to maybe bolt, to, you know, a high school child's not going to be able to adequately protect your child. I couldn't in good conscience put my son with a high school child and leave him there. And I would ask that you consider either allowing the SEAT, who, you know, are competent, trained adults, to come in and shadow the child, they're paid already by the county. And if you won't do that, then to have a competent person who's trained for those instances where a child is deemed to need more than a high school student. It's something, you know, I was left two weeks before camp started with no option. I ran to Mr. B., God bless him, who made me swear, but he's in heaven, so he doesn't mind, that I not tell anybody, but he bumped me up the list to go in the nursery school and into the program at the Recreation Center, where John and his other classmates from Jacob's Ladder had their SEATS attend their pre-K summer program. This Recreation Center invites the SEAT. They appreciate the SEAT. They understand the SEAT. I hope that as a principal of a special ed school, you understand the SEAT, and maybe you can help explain and educate people more on the nature of what a SEAT is. And, you know, I feel, my son, I pay taxes, you felt it was strong, the district felt strong enough that John should go to the program, that they offered, they paid for it, and he couldn't go. So I would ask you to revisit this, and to provide a one-on-one, when needed, that's beyond a high school student, where it's, where the child requires it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Hi, Katie Conlin, 63 Broadway. What brought me out here initially, I knew the calendar was on the agenda, and I looked at the one that was on the website, which is, I didn't realize, but in big orange letters. It says draft with 2016. I missed the date on that, but I got nervous because I saw that Election Day on that calendar had us in session. So I see now that that's been rectified, but it's still, I have questions with regards to, I know not all, but which of our schools are polling stations?
Covert? We, virtually all of them, except the high school.
Watson's no longer a polling station.
She...
It is officially...
It's officially on some things, she gets them to go across the street, but in the regular...
Pretty much, I used to vote there, I live right down the block, and I, for all of my voting, I go to Halandia Court now, across the street from there. My concern is that with your increasing need for more diverse religious, you know, holiday acknowledgement, that this is not going to be a problem that, and I know that the calendar in certain years, just with the way the days of the week fall, become challenging to get your numbers of days in. And that Election Day, I know last year, no, this current school year, was a big debate because people were upset because we didn't have off for the Veterans Day observance on the 10th. But it was done to give kids off on Election Day. Are those, is the district required by the state, or by any sort of mandate required by law, to be, offer their schools as polling stations?
The answer is yes. And it is the Board of Elections that makes that determination, not us. They select the sites. Look, we, I happen to be the liaison for the Nassau superintendents, working with them. We are looking to change that. We are hoping that we are able to, and particularly in this day and age, figure out a way for the Board of Elections to pick other sites within their election districts that can be used rather than schools. However, they make the decision, not us.
Well, how was Watson then, how did she, Mrs. Waldman?
They made the decision not to go there anymore, and I'm not sure what.
Mrs. Wald, Waldman has special powers.
She does, she does.
She did her...
No, I'm just, my concern is the safety, and I know, I don't, I know this has been discussed in other meetings, you know, when the safety issues came up, but I just think that moving forward, this is going to be an ongoing problem, and honestly, I don't want it to ever be an issue that you're faced with, you know, having to be open with kids in classes on Election Day with your schools as being a polling site.
You know, you just, first of all, the election, the Board of Elections answer only to the State Board of Elections. So they don't answer to the county, they don't answer to the town, they don't answer to us. They are an independent agency that operates essentially as a state agency, with local representatives who are appointed to their Board of Elections. And there's one Republican and one Democrat in Nassau County that run the offices, and they, they have to come to an agreement. You know, there may be opportunities for people like yourself and us. We, you know, we as superintendents represent the school district, and I will tell you that virtually every school district in Nassau County shares exactly the same concern that you do. We have not been successful in convincing them to change the venues for elections. Maybe what we really need is the PTA to make this a priority. You vote in much larger numbers. I mean, there are, you know, there are 50 of us, and there are thousands upon thousands of parents who are going to be part of the election cycle. If they knew that there was this groundswell of support to move it, they're afraid of changing, of any change, and that the minute they move it, even across the street as they did at Watson, people will not vote. So let me get back to you, if it's all right with you.
Yeah.
As long as I know that you would be willing to work with us and possibly solicit the support of others...
Sure.
...to change that. You know, within the school district, we used to have a number of different sites, and what we did was, we figured out how to run an election in a single site.
Right.
And it didn't have an impact on the outcome of our elections. We still had the same levels of participation that we did when we had numerous sites. So I think it's a myth that they're living with. And there are a variety of different alternatives that they can select. Halandia, who would ever think that they should be a location? But it's easy, because there aren't that many people within these small districts.
Right.
So...
Because also, I mean, I think people also forget that even just aside from the official Election Day, you've got primary elections where the schools are open and kids are in session, that, that is another vulnerability from a safety point of view, that, so it's not just that one day, that, you know...
You're right, the primaries...
The turnout for those primaries is not as great, but it's still, you know, an opportunity for something bad to...
Yes, all right.
But anyway, that was just my...
Thank you very much for bringing it up, it's a very important issue.
Hi, my name is Tammy Deitch, at 73 Buckminster Road. First, I want to thank you all, because my son Danny was on, from Covert, and he performed today. I don't see theater in his future, but I appreciate your well wishes. I'm here because, maybe two weeks ago, there was a bomb incident at the middle school, and I went to the PTA meeting on Tuesday, where Ms. McGinn was very honest and forthright about what had occurred and how things were handled. Thankfully, everyone was fine, and it was just a threat at that point. But it was clear from her speaking and questions that we've asked her, that the protocols in place for an evacuation for a bomb threat did not seem to follow what transpired. And it was a lot of, to use her words, Monday morning quarterbacking. And in this day and age, with six schools, seven schools that you are responsible for, I would hope that there is a clear, defined evacuation plan, not a fire drill for a bomb threat, because it's frightening and it's prevalent in this world today.
Okay, I can, there is a protocol, and I'm disappointed that that was characterized as Monday morning quarterbacking, because I was part of those conversations. The decision to do it as a fire drill initially was to get the kids into the smaller groups, make sure there was supervision at a rate of about 1 to 10, get their coats, get them out of the building before 1:00, which was the time that the threat. We then called the temple to make sure that it was available, rather than send everybody down there at that, at that point. So we made sure that they were clothed properly before they went, walked out the building. We did what we, what we did was, people routinely go through fire drills.
Right.
So we did what we knew was something everyone would respond positively to, and we do have a protocol. We didn't feel that was necessary, and we followed the protocol to the letter. So once you were down there, as you may know, I don't know if you're familiar with what took place when...
Yes.
...the kids were there. Or you were.
No, I had...
Did you pick up your child?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Because I trusted that the school was handling it properly, and I didn't feel like adding more chaos to parking lots and getting confused it wasn't necessary. Now, where I feel like perhaps maybe things should be different, and this is just my looking in from the outside, number one, to treat it as a fire drill if it's a bomb threat. If there, God forbid, was a bomb, and the bomb went off, and you're standing in front of the middle school in the front of the building, that's probably not the best place to be standing. Number two, if a kid realizes, oh my God, I'm going to get busted for this, I'm going to take the bomb, and I'm going to put it in my bag, and I'm going to take it with me, because I don't want to get caught, now the bomb's at the temple. Number two, number three, why would they go to their lockers? I mean, at some point, the kids are just going to be cold. I mean, my daughter, actually, I picked her up from dance, and she was wearing shorts. I'm like, it's 38 degrees, put your pants on. They could be cold for the risk of opening a locker that might trigger something, or have the kid grab it. If there's actually an evacuation, you evacuate. And I appreciate that you're caring about their, their cold and their bags, but there was confusion, like my daughter's advisory teacher said, don't take anything. So I saw that her phone in her bag, but yet I found out at that meeting that some of the advisory teachers said, take your backpacks. Some of them said, take your iPads. Some of them said, take your bags. So there was confusion and inconsistency, and that's the fear, because at any point, this child, if there wasn't anything, thankfully, but something could be taken, and then the wrong, the wrong, I don't know, it just, bad things can happen. So that's just my outside...
We have, we do have a protocol that was in place. We're very familiar with the protocol. A lot of what you're talking about were judgment calls that had to be made on the spot.
Yes.
And we made them in what we thought was the best interest of the students. They were evacuated safely, they were brought to a shelter where they were safe, and then they were returned to school safely.
Absolutely. And I think that was wonderful, and Ms. McGinn is a wonderful administrator, and I, this is nothing against her, it's just, what are we going to do next time? Because perhaps maybe they shouldn't go to their lockers, and they just get cold. And do the other schools have the same, do the advisory teachers in the high school know what to do?
We have a plan for every building.
Okay.
And, and we also take from this plan and learn and improve our plan. We talk about it, and it builds a better, safer, you know, more controlled environment. So it's not, okay, we put the book away and that, you know, we wait till the next time. We will learn from what happened now, or this past time, and, you know, make, make, make it better, make it easier, make it safer and more fluid then.
Okay.
And I think just ensuring consistency of drills continuing throughout the year, that's the important piece of what you're talking about. The more consistent we are with the drills, the smoother it will go.
I was told by Mr. Raymar and Ms. McGinn that they don't have evacuation drills. They have fire drills and lockdown drills. You have eight total, but no evacuation.
There are reasons for doing, not doing that.
And it's fine, but just...
And the fire drill was, it wasn't just qualified drill, it was a planned response, because that's what the students understand and know, and it was a quick way to get them out of the building. It wasn't just, uh, what do we do, qualified drill. It was, it was, it was considered, and that was the best way to do it. And remember, the police were there with us the whole time, guiding us and helping us and telling us what, you know, what their, what their opinion was. So was a, it was a collaborative, you know, learning, collaborative with the police department and the school district to make this safe, make it safe for the students.
Okay.
But we will always learn from what has happened, and move forward with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kathy Baxley, 7th Hawk Lane, and I'm speaking as the Southside High School PTA President regarding prom, post-prom graduation. Going to beg of you to have high school parents involved, PTA parents particularly, in your decisions and your meetings about what you're going to do. Because we start planning for post-prom in May of this year, for next June. It is countless, countless hours of time and people that are involved. I know you're all nodding at me, but I want to get this out there on the record, I'm serious. You have parents who, post-prom is run, obviously, to keep our seniors safe and their dates. You have parents who, post-prom is run, obviously, to keep our seniors safe and their dates. It is a tradition, but it's also mandated almost by the administration that we have it. And we have volunteers who work for hours and hours and hours, raising $55,000 is our goal for that one event, and it takes a full year to do it. We need to be part of the decision, because you need to understand that post-prom starts at 11:30 PM and goes till 2:30 AM. It's usually on a Thursday night. All the parents who are there mostly, obviously, take the day off. We don't get home till 4 o'clock in the morning. The next day's graduation, you have the weekend to recover. Changing things around, people can't take off multiple days of work. That has to be taken into consideration. Changing, if the prom is on a Friday, that's different. I don't know. I don't know how to fix it. I've been sitting there trying to figure it out myself. I, I really, really don't. If there's a regent's at 1 o'clock on Thursday, to get to the prom by 5 o'clock, it, it just sounds absolutely impossible. It affects juniors, it affects sophomores, not just seniors go. And I know you know all that, but...
No, I'm, I'm just agreeing with you.
No, I know. From the point of me and the PTA and the amount of work that goes into that, it's either something's going to have to change.
How would you feel about having the prom on a Tuesday?
Of, of when?
Of the following week.
The following week? And not graduation?
I mean, that's what Sue was suggesting, that we take a look at, and we'll go back and, and we will. We'll take a look at the logistics involved in that. I mean, we'd have to rent Hofstra on that Wednesday.
Right.
Tuesday then, so that, even though Wednesday is the regent's rating day, in all likelihood, there would be no exam for Tuesday. That would affect anything?
Nothing on Tuesday.
No.
Yeah, I can't imagine having an exam either Thursday or Friday and having graduation and prom at that, that same time. It just doesn't seem feasible. Having it that following Tuesday with graduation on Wednesday? I don't know. You had said, Chris, you were going to put the calendar up and ask for feedback, but that calendar doesn't have anything. It doesn't mention graduations or...
No, no, that's why I said to you, when we put it up, I think what we need to do, and Mark was suggesting it earlier, that we put the calendar up, but I think what we need to do also is, is also identify at the bottom in some, maybe in some written format, that we're contemplating a prom on the Thursday night and a graduation on a Friday night prior to the end of school. And then allow people to provide us feedback. But I, I, listen, I fully agree with you, but let's, if we could, I mean, I, I don't know how you feel. I mean, look, you can't answer right now, because you have to think this through with...
I hadn't thought about the Tuesday, Wednesday. I know.
Right.
It's definitely something, when you do start talking about it, instead of like a forum like this, if you can, we could sit down with the PTA, with parents who have been through this and know what it entails, and we could certainly give a lot of feedback, I guess. Maybe that's my whole question.
Right.
Can you make sure we're part of the decision?
Yes, definitely.
Before...
And if you, if you can reach out to the high school PTA and ask them for feedback to you, as, as, just to get feedback also, you know...
Oh, absolutely. We brought it up at our meeting last night, but it's...
But our, our, we won't know when the tests are. That's our concern about planning a Thursday and a Friday, because we don't know what's going to happen Thursday and Friday. So all, all the planning we can do until the test date actually comes out is...
Right.
Is a different thing to do.
I understand.
So we need, I, I think we need to look at the safest possible plan, you know, I'm, I'm thinking pushing it out might be the safest way, because then you're more assured there's not going to be a test that day.
And is this just for this one year?
Yes, because the next year it becomes more normal, because the, the last day is a Friday instead of a Wednesday.
So then, you might want to consider not, I know this is against Rockwell Center's philosophy, consider not having the prom the night before graduation, just this one year. I, I don't know if you could do it. I mean, you can do it. I went to Southside, my prom was like June 1st, and graduation was at the end. It is possible. I know you don't like that, but it might be a solution just for one year.
I, I don't know what it solves. I do, I don't know, you know what I'm saying? I don't know if that really solves the problem.
Well, you can't have a prom if you have a regent's the next day. You can't go, you know? If, but if, I don't know. I don't know. Again, this is something that maybe we could all just talk about and brainstorm.
If we go back to why the post-prom is so important, understand where it came from and where its origin was.
Oh, I under, I do. I completely understand.
It's to keep our kids alive and well, and provide them a wonderful opportunity. I mean, I think kids are going to remember last year's experience because of the, the, I don't know where you're going this year, but...
Same, same. The ironic part is, we already booked it for 2019, so...
When did you book it?
Well, that Thursday, just assuming, but obviously, we'll, we can change that. That's not a problem. But we just need to know. Because after Southside had their event there, which was the first one, she said they're booked the entire week. The word got out, and, and they're, they love it. So they're giving us a really good deal because of that. But we need to continue this, and we need to have it. We don't want to lose it, so...
So, look, the board's decision about the calendar itself and the holidays and everything else is one thing.
Yeah, no, I'm just, yes, I'm talking about...
The issue of the prom...
And graduation.
And the graduation is really something, I think, Mr. Murphy, you're probably going to have to involve my office, because it's going to involve possibly workdays or non-workdays.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to, if you want to put together a collection of people that would normally work with you on the post-prom, and we can sit down in the boardroom and hash all these ideas out.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful to the board, and also give us an opportunity to learn from one another exactly what, and maybe we could push the state to make a decision early.
So we know...
So we know in advance.
And the junior officers in May go find a venue, this May, for prom, so they also need a date, you know, so that you can, you have to get it. They had trouble last year, just because there aren't that many venues that will host a prom, and...
Now, did you say every day in the following week, which is the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, are gone?
No, that, the week before.
Oh, the week before.
Yeah. Well, for this year.
Oh, I see.
I don't know what's taken for 2019, yeah, but we, they said that we will always have that Thursday. But now we need to know what day it is, because we want to have whatever day it is.
Right.
So just please include us.
We definitely...
All right. Thank you.
And please, can you please put it out to the membership?
Would you mind, would you mind, really, I'm serious. Would you be able to collect a group of people or get them together? And if I could get them in John's office or over in my office? I'd rather do it sooner than later. I really don't want to, because I think, board, we really need to make a decision on this, and if it's going to cause the consternation, I'd rather get out there so you guys have an opportunity to plan and do it sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hi. Karen Glenn, 1276 Saraleen. Just in regard to the bomb threat day at the middle school, I just actually wanted to praise the teachers that day. From my understanding, they kept the children calm. Some of the children were upset, from what I understand, but overall, I think they did a great job, and I did go pick up my child, and it seemed like they did have order. Of course, it was a little chaos, but it was easy to get your child. You had to send an email to Ms. Pascarella, I believe her name is. Sent the email, gave your child's name, they went and got him, and you were able to go. So I think it worked out well.
But you had to sign them out?
You had to send an email, and then you gave one of the teachers your child's name, and then they went in the back and found him and brought him to you.
Okay.
So they had lists going, they were checking the list, but then you also had to do the email so that they would be able to check that as well. So I thought it went well. It really was. As a parent, I was pleased.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. How are you? My name is Kathy Moorback, and I live at 74 Liberty Avenue. I have two children in Wilson Grammar School. My concern is the safety at entering the building. When you enter the building, you are buzzed in, and they expect you to sign in a visitor log and take a sticker. Normally, the secretary comes and will say, can I help you? For me, I don't think this job is for a secretary. She shouldn't be a security guard, and it's also a case of, sometimes things happen, whether they, they see someone they think they know, and they buzz them in, and it's not who they assume. There's a case that occurred, AW versus Nebraska, where a five-year-old boy was molested by a man that came in the school. It was, the man was directed to his bathroom that was only for adults, and the teachers directed him to this bathroom, and he said, okay, I'm going to get my sticker. He went to a children's bathroom, and a five-year-old boy was molested. I do not want anything like that happening in our school, and I just feel like there should be something, a better system. In city schools, they have security guards. Even in the high school, you go in the high school, you cannot walk in unless you see that security guard. All this, you know, it's just, I don't think it's acceptable for grammar schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are, we are looking into different things and reviewing different types of plans, so we'll come up with something in the, in the near future. Anyone else?
First, thank you, everybody, for staying up so late for this meeting. My name is Marlene Albarano, 21 Hamilton Street, Rockwell Center. Subsequent to some of the security conversations that we've had tonight, I think there was a discussion, which unfortunately I missed at the middle school, regarding doors that are left open overnight throughout the school district, particularly, I'm going to say, in the middle school, which is part of the concern that parents walked away from. My understanding is the custodial staff stays behind, and often, these doors are accessible, and they're left open. I don't have a great detail on this conversation, because the minutes from that meeting has not been sent out for the rest of the parents. I did ask to please see meeting notes, because not all parents had able to make the PTA meeting, particularly this week when things were shifted around because of the snowstorm. Some parents missed it. So I think it's in our best interest to have that discussion. What happens to the buildings off hours? Are they accessible? Are they not accessible? Why are they being accessible? And the threat, right, the, the danger that, that poses to the students and even the staff.
What, what building did you say was open?
The middle school.
There are a number of basketball teams and other activities that are ongoing at the middle school until 10 o'clock at night, and most of them involve children. There are, I believe, the Girl Scouts, or the, I'm not sure if they meet there, but I know that there are basketball leagues that, that regularly play ball. We do not have any, they're supposed to provide the supervision, but we do provide them access to the building. We have looked at trying to secure the building. If we do, we're going to have to shut down all of those activities.
I, I mean, we will definitely look into if the building is open all night. I've never heard that before. Like, you're talking throughout the entire night.
I assume, but when you say all night, until 9 or 10 o'clock?
My understanding is that it's, it's accessible way beyond those hours.
Oh, no. No, 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 no. No, we have, no, there, maybe you know something I don't know, but I...
We'll, we'll look into that.
Certainly, we'll look into it.
Typically, the door, you know, to what we understand is that basketball plays till 10 o'clock at night.
Right.
And the custodial would lock the door. That's the, that would be the typical...
I think what I, what I would ask is that the process of having anyone, right, in the building, any activities, and I'm not discouraging the activities, what I am encouraging is to take a look at things in a different way. We live in a different world. The building, you know, even when my, my child is in the drama club and, and music is accessible, is a very large building. Anybody could get lost in it, and anyone can access any part of the building. Even when we have the drama shows, they can walk up any staircase and access any level of the building. So to me is, let's look at things in a creative way, so that we can secure the building and really feel comfortable that when there's a bomb threat and someone says, oh, it's just a marker pen on a bathroom and there's really no bomb, that we feel 100% comfortable that that's the truth. You know, because one day might not be. That's what I'm asking.
We'll look into that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Now, we'll move on to the business. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson, may I have a gift?
I know what they are, but I can't...
Gift of a trombone and a guitar to the music department?
Superintendent recommends the acceptance of the gift as listed on the agenda.
Thank you very much for whoever it was, that it was an anonymous gift, I guess?
Yeah, they were actually evaluated by Dr. Zuar. There are some minor repairs associated with each of them, but nothing that would warrant us to not accept them. There are some, by the way, when Brian takes a look at them, thank you, but no thank you. Yes. Not, not in this case. So just, I, I'm, I know when I saw it, that was my first concern also, what are we accepting here? Or we could just go to sell it for the metal, or is it really an instrument that can be played? And, and he has to make that judgment call, but he said, very, very minor adjustments to both instruments, so we're fine.
All right. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed? Oh, we need to accept the gift. Do I need to have a motion? Can I have a motion to accept the gift of a trombone and a guitar to the music department?